At the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the city, in the commission chambers and city manager's conference room on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, old federal building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
Please remain standing for the prayer. Leading us in prayer tonight is Pastor Moises Molina from Jericho Church.
Thank you Pastor. It's a pleasure to be here with you guys and especially in this time of year, Christmas, very special for us all believers. Let's go on to the Lord in prayer for tonight's meeting. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together for this night and all the recognition and all the business that we'll be taking care of today. We pray that it is led through your hand, through each one of the members of this board and the participants in the public. We ask that your wisdom can always be with the decision makers. We thank you for our leadership in this city, that you may continue, Lord, to be with each one of them as the year concludes and that you bring us back next year, Lord, with more blessings and more joy. Thank you for allowing us to celebrate this time of year. Christmas is very special for us all in many ways, but thank you for leaving your throne to become flesh among us. Please continue to bless the rest of the night as we proceed with the regular business schedule. We ask all of this in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Next, we have the mayor's activity update.
Just a brief message. I wanted, first of all, welcome everybody here. This is our last meeting of the year and I'm going to ask you to indulge me. I may have a little bit of a cough and all kinds of flu-like symptoms, but I'm not, I don't have the flu, I don't believe, anyway. But, anyway, just bear with me. And the last thing is, and probably the foremost, is I want to wish everybody a safe and blessed holiday. I want to congratulate the boys. Hopefully, this Christmas will be as special as any one you'll ever have. And, and just be safe and, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Next, we have the commissioner's activity update.
I'll start. I want to, once again, echo the mayor's sentiments and wish everybody a Merry Christmas to all our students, to our principal, to our staff, everybody and the parents. Congratulations on a wonderful season. And as commissioner, we'll recognize in a couple of minutes, it's due to the foundation that these gentlemen have at home. So, to all you parents, congratulations on a, on a very, very, very successful season. I wanted to thank Rachel, Noel, all our staff, everybody that had the awards banquet, that planned the awards banquet this past weekend. We had a very wonderful time last Friday. And, congratulations to all the employees from 40 years of service, all the way on down to, to our tenure recipients. Congratulations to our employees. Merry Christmas to you and your families also. And also, thank you to our library staff. I did the annual reading on Saturday. We had a good turnout with a lot of children and families. And that was something that's very dear to my heart. So, I'm thankful for the, for the staff that came out. We did the recordings. We did our, our annual recording also for the, for the holiday season. So, thank you. And just continued blessings for everybody as we go into the holidays and as we prepare for a new 2019. May all your goals, especially as you start preparing for college, you know, may you be safe, may you be ready, and the sky's the limit. Congratulations.
I want to echo the sentiments of our mayor and Commissioner Longoria. I am so proud to have the Hannah football team here today. My week has been very filled with city activity, but one of the really cool things that I did, thanks to Principal Blanca Lombardi, she's sitting here with us, our honored guest. She helped me pull off a surprise party for the Hannah football team. So, on Friday, I showed up at Hannah with 30 pizzas for these amazing guys. And we had a wonderful time. And so, the big surprise of it all was that we were going to bring him here to City Hall. So, we will be recognizing you in a few moments. But I just want to echo the sentiments to all of our constituents in the city of Brownsville. We wish you a very Merry Christmas and a very happy holidays. Blessed New Year. Very prosperous one coming down the pipe. But with that being said, I just want to remind everybody to remember that the spirit of the season is giving and it's not about what we receive. And in honor of the birth of our Savior, I just encourage everybody to remember that and give to those less fortunate, including our shelter and, and the orphanages that are here in the valley, et cetera. Christmas is not as easy as it is for us, for everybody. And let's just remember that. So, on a positive note, I just want to thank everybody for being here. We have a full house and it has been an honor and a privilege to be your commissioner and I'm looking forward to next year. Thank you.
I too want to echo the sentiments. Congratulations to the Hannah football team. A hundred thousand years ago, my father coached at Hannah, so you don't know it, but you have a special blessing on my shoulder from him, from heaven to you. Congratulations to your team and your coaches and your staff. On a, thank you. On a Christmas note, I would wish every single person in Brownsville a Merry Christmas. If you are going to stay home, visit a park, check out a trail, shop at a small business, and eat at a restaurant that is also a small business. That is what makes our community rich and will continue to create vibrancy as we move forward in Brownsville. If you're going to go out of town, you can still shop at a small business, eat at a small owned restaurant, and check out a park and a trail and bring us ideas back from your travels. Very Merry Christmas, but most of all, make some beautiful memories with your family and friends.
Congratulations to Hannah. I was actually a Hannah Eagle my freshman year. Wasn't able to finish at Hannah because of the rezoning, but I was there for a whole year. So, congratulations to you guys and the coaching staff, administration. And also, would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a prosperous New Year. May all of your wishes be, be granted. Thank you, guys.
I was also an Eagle back in the dark ages. And so, I congratulate you all on a good job. And I want to wish a happy and safe holidays for our staff and for all our community. So, God bless everyone.
Just, just so y'all can recognize it, Hannah was probably the only high school back then.
Next, we have the city manager's update.
Mayor, commission members, just a few updates. One key one is this Friday, department directors will be engaging in a leadership workshop. That workshop will be facilitated and the goal of that is to start to focus on our culture. Building our culture, focusing on vision values. That will happen on Friday. This will be a process, but eventually, we'll talk about mindset, behaviors, attitudes, skills. How do we build success? And that starts with the culture. Before we get too bogged down with strategy and structures and systems, we need to create the environment that will help us be successful. So, that will be starting Friday. Another update is the Help Call Center. There will be some phone system upgrades tomorrow from 11:30 to 1:00 PM. So, during this time, the 546 HELP phone line will be unavailable. So, we thank residents in advance for their patience. They can contact us via text or through email at 546HELP@COB.us. And finally, I sent you all an email about the MPO workshop, which we're hoping to put together next week between Monday and Wednesday. The one date that appears to be the consensus in terms of what, what works for your availability is Tuesday. I sent you all a format of what would be the elements that we would discuss and who would speak on those items. So, if we finalize that for Tuesday, that'll be at 5:30 and it'll take us as long as it needs to hopefully just a couple of hours. So, I thank you. Thank you all for your cooperation on that. And it will be open to the public.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our proclamation. This would be for the Hannah Early College High School Golden Eagle Football Team. If you all please would step forward.
I'd like to welcome you all up to the front. Coach, Coach Guess, Principal Lombardi. It's an honor and a privilege to have you here at City Hall. I myself am, I told you on Friday, I'm your Mama Eagle, class of 2001. So, I was absolutely just so excited for you guys to see how far that you made it. And here in the city of Brownsville, you represented, you played your hearts out and we were short one point, but that doesn't make us any less proud of you. Yeah, yeah, sorry. So, but we love you and we are so proud of you and you are our honored guests today here in City Hall. It is your day. Do you want to line up?
It's practice.
How many players are there? A lot. Wow, over 50. That's why it took 30 boxes of pizza. 60, oh wow. There's lots of room here in the back. Welcome, Coach Guess. It is an absolute honor and a privilege to read this proclamation to you right now, going out to the parents. This is, this is the fruits of your labor, all of the practices, all of the hard work, all of the discipline, all of the morals that you have instilled into your children are going to take them, to propel them, launch them into the future of the city of Brownsville. And you are the leaders of tomorrow. And so, I'm just so honored to have you here today. Do you want to continue lining up here in the back? Yeah? Okay. And I will begin. And I apologize in advance if I get any names wrong. Okay? "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Hannah Early College High School Golden Eagle Football Team. Whereas, the Hannah Early College High School was first established in 1967 and is located at 2615 Price Road, Brownsville, Texas. The Hannah Early College High School adheres to the mission to develop competitively driven and socially involved critical thinkers who will benefit our society and make a positive impact on our future. Whereas, sports like football play an important role in the personal and social development of our youth. Playing sports can help teach honesty, teamwork, fair play, and respect. Sports provide an opportunity for student athletes to follow rules, learn about self-respect, confidence, and managing stress. Whereas, on November 23, 2018, the Hannah Golden Eagle Football Team advanced in the third round of the playoffs after defeating the Eagle Pass High School Football Team 28 to 13 in San Antonio, Texas during the Class 6A Division 2 area round. On November 29, 2018, more than 200 Brownsville community members united at a community pep rally held at the Brownsville Sports Park Stadium to cheer on the team for their historic advancement to the university interscholastic league and regional semifinal football playoffs. Whereas, the Hannah Golden Eagle Football Team is comprised of over 50 student athletes, including Michael Payan, Victor Campos, Diego Escobar, Chris Arredondo, Roman Gary, Erin Frausto, Johnny Alaman, Alcee Flores, Josiah Myers, Alex Gracia, Jonathan Rodriguez, Ernesto Mendoza, Edgar Zavutucha, Thomas Green, Ryan Trinidad, Chris Medina, Lee Givada, Brian Duran, Andric Flores, Cesar Mansias, Andres... Okay, wait, this is the one? Sust- what is? Susta? Okay, what is it? Sustaita. Andres Sustaita, yes. Damian Martinez, Brandon Robles, Isaac Iracheta, Julian Soto, Ramon Reyes, Miguel Niclo, Anthony Ambriz, Umberto Garcia, Jose Cruz, Ernest Vientos, Alfredo Virial, Brandon Estevas, Jared Lozano, Abraham Coronado, Lino Rodriguez, Robert Reyes, Sebastian Garcia, Doug Toman, John Delor- John Delorres, Jose Reyna, Isaiah Lira, Giovanni Rivera, Zach Williams, Alejandro Perez, Noon Nuani, Jonathan Huerta, German Wu, Adrian Salinas, Armando Garcia, Sergio Ortiz, Brandon Bautista, Ethan Peña, and Jose Castellano. The team is led by head football coach Mark Guess, defensive coordinator Jose Ramirez, offensive coordinator Damian Vela, and of course, their amazing principal, Blanca Lombardi. Whereas, the Hannah Golden Eagle Football Team traveled to San Antonio to compete against the San Antonio Braden's High School Football Team on December the 1st, 2018, at the Alamo Dome in a regional matchup. This accomplishment, on behalf of the Hannah Early College High School Golden Eagle Football Team, has generated tremendous school spirit and community pride that unite students, families, and fans across generations. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in the Charter of the said city and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor the Hannah Early College High School Golden Eagle Football Team and further call upon the citizens of Brownsville to celebrate the accomplishments of the Hannah Early College High School Golden Eagle Football Team as they continue to inspire our community through their hard work and determination done on this 11th day of December, 2018. Congratulations.
I invite you to say a few words.
Test, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
I'm Blanca Lombardi and I'm the proud principal of Hannah Early College High School. And thank you for the opportunity to thank you. This proclamation definitely brings so much pride, not only to our school, but to our community. And it motivates our students to continue working hard and to follow their dreams. Thank you so much for this recognition.
I want to thank all of you personally and on behalf of the commission because you guys are the future of Brownsville. When you go off to college, don't forget where your home is. And, and come back. And I know you'll make a sprout of wherever you go. So, don't forget, you got to make Brownsville your number one priority and we're here for you. So, congratulations. One more plan of applause.
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioner, Commission. Thank you all so much for having us here and recognizing us for the accomplishments these young men made this year. It was certainly my pleasure and my honor to be able to lead these guys for as long as I have. And I know they're going to do great things for, not only for, for themselves and their families, but for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I know this may take a while, but you guys want to go by and at least shake the hands of all the commission? I think that would be nice.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Is there a question?
Very welcome. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're very proud of you. Congratulations. 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 We're very proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Hello, good to see you guys again. Congratulations. 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 We're very proud of you. Congratulations. Sorry about the name. I got it though, I got it. Congratulations. 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 You're very welcome. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. You're very welcome, absolutely. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
More relation to the Philadelphia Eagles? Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Coach Guess. You're very welcome. Yes, absolutely. Congratulations to you and your son.
I'm sure you can have a better season next year.
I'm sure we want to give some good luck.
Congratulations. Great job.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, one of my main objectives has been economic development. And one of the problems I feel is that when we have young talent for yourself, you go off to college, you get a great degree, but then there's nothing for you to do in Brownsville. So, I think it's our responsibility as the city commission to create those opportunities for you to come back and live fully realized and have great opportunities to really, my number one focus is economic development. Thank you.
Hi, my question. Well, one of the things, as I was a student at Hannah, one of the things that used to happen was we'd cross across Eagle Drive and onto Price Road. So, now you'll see that there are protected crosswalks. You'll see that there are sidewalks. You'll see that there's safe passages for your school. That's one of the things that I'm so proud to have done. Aside from that, I'd have to echo the sentiments of economic development to make sure that when you graduate high school, you have a university that you can go to, wherever it is that you want to go, whether it's in Brownsville, whether it's, you know, with a football scholarship and you have a good job to come home to. We have SpaceX, the rocket company coming and we're just so proud of you guys. Like I tell you, aim for the stars because you will land among them if you work for it. So, welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through E. Next, we have our public hearings. Public hearing number six. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-048 to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot D number 24 of the unrecorded plot of La Coma subdivision and being a 0.143 acre tract out of 68.12 acre tract out of tract number two, subdivision eight, Paredes Partition Share 19, Espirito Santo Grant located at 3424 Gardena Street.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. This first property tonight is 0.143 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling A. They're asking to be rezoned to dwelling G in order to build a duplex. To the north, south, east, and west are single-family dwellings. Also, to the west, there are, there is a commercial business. Here is the zoning map of the area. As you can see, most of the area is dwelling, but there are other uses mixed in, including some retail use along Calle Milpe Verde. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 43 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling G.
Yes, anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-049 to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot eight, block three, La Lomita, section two, every subdivision of block 14, La Nina subdivision located at 618 Joan Lane.
This property is 0.19 acre. They are asking to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G to reduce the setbacks. To the north, south, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings. Additionally, to the south, there is some undeveloped land. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, most of the area is dwelling. However, mixed in with this neighborhood, there is some different categories. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 37 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling A to dwelling G.
Anyone here on this issue?
Close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-050 to rezone from dwelling...
I think we didn't approve it, did we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, we, sorry, close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, I'm sorry.
Public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-050 to rezone from dwelling A to general retail A for lots 11, 12, 13, and 14, block four, Núvel subdivision located at 14 and 54, Pearl Drive.
This property is 0.66 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling A and they're asking it to be changed to general retail 4C-A. This is along Boca Chica and Pearl at the intersection. In all directions, there are single-family dwellings. Also, to the east, west, and to the south, there is commercial business. Here is the zoning map. As you can see, along Boca Chica Boulevard, there is a lot of retail use, including general retail, fourth commercial, and medium retail, third commercial.
Were there any oppositions?
No. There were 30 mailouts and no opposition.
Okay, and you generally do, I think I'm looking for that little ditty in there where it says no opposition.
Oh, it's, it's right here.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess the format was just a little different. Is anyone here on this issue? You are?
Yes.
Please step forward. State your name.
Even though it says zero, I always like to ask.
I just didn't even see it.
Yeah.
My name is Julie Smith and I own a mobile home park located close to this property on Boca Chica Boulevard. And previously included in that mobile home park was two lots on Pearl Drive that when I was trying to continue to use it as part of my mobile home park, was told that I was not allowed to by the planning committee. And basically, ended up having to sell those lots. So, I want to go on record as having reservations about why this particular portion of that Pearl subdivision is allowed to be changed to commercial. But when I actually had commercial use of property on Pearl Drive, was told that I was no longer allowed to use it. So, for the record.
That's good, and thank you for coming forward. Larry, is that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming that the property that she's talking about-
Please state your name.
Is the property that is-
Put your name.
Your name, sir.
I'm sorry, Larry Hodgson. I'm assuming the property she's talking about is just to the north of our office building, which is also on Boca Chica, but on the opposite side of Pearl Drive. And it, that property had been used by the mobile home park for many years. Our office building, we've owned for over 40 years, and I now find out that it's zoned residential. And the building that we're asking for rezoning, which is on the opposite side of Pearl Drive, probably has been at least 50 years. It was a grocery store when we bought the property over 30 years ago. So, we appreciate coming into compliance. We didn't realize we weren't, the appraisal district records showed that it was commercial. I never had any idea that it was anything other than commercial. But I, and I've got no problem with her property, which is just north of us, the same way.
Well, thank you for coming forward as well. Okay, anybody else on this issue?
Would it close public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Next item?
Public hearing number nine. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-051 to rezon from professional office F to professional office G for lot three, block 45, original townsite located near the corner of Palm Boulevard and Levy Street.
This property is 0.133, uh, 0.1377 of an acre. It's currently zoned, first commercial, professional office F, and they're asking it to be rezoned to professional office G. This is along East Levy Street. To the west and to the south, there are single-family dwellings as well as commercial businesses. To the east, there are single-family dwellings, apartments, civic institution, and commercial businesses. To the north, there is the same. Here is the zoning map of the area. As you can see, East Levy is all professional office, first commercial. As well as East Elizabeth is going to be all medium retail, third commercial. Here is the 200-foot radius map. There were 26 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends supporting rezoning from professional office F, 1CF, to professional office G, 1CG, with a specific use permit to allow a duplex.
Is anyone else, is anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing? Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve? Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-052 to rezon from dwelling Y to dwelling G for a 0.81 acre tract out of block seven, share 19/27 El Caden subdivision located at 594 Billy Mitchell Boulevard.
This property is 0.81 of an acre. It's currently zoned dwelling Y, and they're asking it to be rezoned to dwelling G to reduce the setbacks. And it is fronting Billy Mitchell. To the north, south, east, and west, there are single-family dwellings as well as commercial businesses to the north and to the west. To the south, there's also some undeveloped land. This request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from dwelling Y to dwelling G.
Anyone here on this issue?
Would it close public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-055-CO to rezon from general retail G to apartment H for lot four, block two, Maso Commercial Park subdivision located at 7701 Vía del Mar Circle.
This property is currently zoned general retail G, and they're asking for apartment H with a conditional overlay to restrict the maximum amount of dwelling units to eight. The owner is in agreement with this, and the next case is for the adjacent property, which have agreed to the same conditional overlay. So to the north, there's commercial business, as well as to the east, commercial business and undeveloped land. To the south, undeveloped land, some single-family dwelling and apartment. And to the west, undeveloped land, single-family dwelling and commercial business. Here's the zoning map. As you can see, there's currently apartment in the area. There were seven mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail G, 4CG, to apartment H, AH-CO, with a conditional overlay to permit a maximum of eight dwelling units.
Is there anyone here on this issue?
Would it close public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12?
Public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-056-CO to rezon from general retail G to apartment H for lot three, block two, Maso Commercial Park subdivision located at 7201 Vía del Mar Circle.
This property is adjacent to the previously approved zoning case. They are asking for the same thing. From general retail 4C to apartment H with a conditional overlay to restrict it to eight dwellings. Here's the zoning map. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail G, 4CG, to apartment H, AH-CO, with a conditional overlay to permit a maximum of eight dwelling units.
Anyone here on this issue?
Move to close public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 13?
Public hearing number 13. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-603-CU and ordinance allowing a conditional use permit for the sale of on-premises alcohol for lots seven and eight, block 180, original townsite located at 1224 East 14th Street.
This property is 0.21 acres. It's zoned fourth commercial D, and they are asking for a conditional use permit for a bar. As you can see, to the, in all directions, there are single-family dwelling, and there's also commercial businesses to the east and west along 14th. Here's the zoning map. You can see most of the area is general retail 4C. There were 30 mailouts and zero written opposition. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this conditional use permit for the sale of an on-premise alcohol, a bar, in general retail F, 4C F.
Is anyone here on this issue? I got two. Would you guys please come forward and state your name for the record?
Uh, yes, hello. My name is Vicente Robles Jr. Good evening, distinguished members of the board. I'm here because my father, I'm here as proxy on behalf of him. He's in San Antonio right now, dealing with a family emergency. But I just wanted to say that the property in question belongs to us. We lost our grand, we found out we lost our grandfathership because we had a renter there. But we found out that he was operating without a proper license, so we evicted him. But then when that, within that six-month period, because he didn't go through the proper channels, that's how we lost the grandfathership of having the bar there. It's always been a bar. We've been there for over 10 years. We also even own some of the homes and properties around the area of residential and some restaurants and things like that. We, I, I just hope that you all can approve what we are requesting. And, yes, thank you.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you for, for being truthful and making sure that your paperwork is in proper order.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Acosta, and I'm here on behalf of my parents and specifically my little sister. She, she is 18 years old. She goes to school every day in the morning. The reason why we are not, or they are not comfortable with opening of a bar is the noise level that is produced during the, it's early morning, from 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning. She has to wake up around 6:30, ready to go to school. The noise levels are high, but the doors closed, windows shut, doesn't matter. This is an old house, no insulation, partly insulated. And there's no way the noise level could go down even at, at the decimal levels or the point decimal, decimal levels by the city. So, on behalf of that, we oppose the opening of this bar because it's, it is unreasonable for my parents and for my little sister to go to sleep at an early time with all the noise that has been produced by the bar in front. It was already opened. I had troubles with them two, three years, and we don't want to go through that. They don't want to go through that. So I don't think it's fair for my little sister to go to sleep late, wake up in a bad mood, or, or anything that is affecting her, her studies. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos, for coming by. Anyone else here?
Would it close public hearing?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Would it approve?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the public comment period. No one signed up for the public comments, so we'll go on to the next agenda item, which is items for individual consideration. Action item number 15. Consideration and action to appoint or reappoint three members to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Mayor?
I think she's got to make a report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
How are you doing?
Fine. So, today, we're here to present, we have three available spots available for the BCIC board. Two of them would like to be reappointed for their second term, and that's Ms. Felicia Edge and Mr. Graham Sevier.
I'll move to reappoint Felicia Felicia Edge.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move to appoint Mr. Arturo Trevino. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll move for Mr. Marco Ochoa.
He was recognized first.
I'm going to move to reappoint Mr. Sevier, Graham Sevier Schultz.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry, let's get a, let's get a roll call.
Yes.
You made the motion, and you paid the-
I made the motion. I'm voting aye.
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 I'm voting nay.
Nay?
Nay.
I'm going to move for Mr. Marco Ochoa.
I'll second.
I believe Mr. Ochoa is on another board, isn't he?
Yes, I spoke with him, and he said if he was appointed, he would resign immediately. He had actually consulted with the Chair of the Main Street, and he is the Chair of the Main Street. I think he served honorably on that board. So I guess there's a motion to second.
Sure. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you, now you have all your members at your-
Correct. Yes. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number 16. Consideration and action on Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation Economic Development Project Funding for the Brownsville Improvement and Growth Programs.
Okay, so I'm here today on two additional items. The first one is about our big programs that we would like to launch out. This is a BCIC initiative. It's called the Brownsville Improvement and Growth Grants, and they will be offered to the, to the public by BCIC in partnership with the city and the Main Street Brownsville to provide financial support to commercial property owners and tenants to make quality interior and exterior improvements to their commercial buildings and property in downtown Brownsville. The big grants will offer four different financial reimbursement assistance programs to businesses that like to expand their existing operations and want to relocate or expand their operations in the designated Brownsville corridors that we have come up with. So, out of those four programs, we have Exterior Facade Improvement Grant, the Interior Capital Improvement Grant, the Sign Improvement Grant Program, and the Downtown Brownsville Rent Subsidy Grant Program. Okay, the goals of the grants are to encourage property investment and directly relates to improving the aesthetics of the building and places and designated areas of our downtown Brownsville, expand the business and employment opportunities in existing and deteriorating structures, enhance the visitor experience and downtown attraction, excuse me, help new and existing businesses succeed by enhancing their curb appeal and increase commercial property value. The big grant is a three-year pilot program. BCIC board has designated $6,200, $200,000 per year to support the pilot program. In 2021, the program will be evaluated on its success and determined if the program should be renewed, discontinued, or expanded to other areas in Brownsville. So here is, right here is the map of downtown Brownsville. In the yellow is the Main Street District. The blue is the overlay district that you guys came up with. And, and the red is the boundaries that we suggest to include the first big grants. So, a little bit about the exterior facade. It's a 50/50 grant match, up to $50,000. It's to help seek improvement to the exterior of the building to make more visible peeling, bring back the productive use, and also the original appearance if possible. The grant will include like replacing the roof, the removal or restoration of the existing facade, cleaning, painting, wall repairs, the replacing, exposing the windows, landscaping, lighting, and of course, replacement of the, or removal of the canopies or awnings. The interior grant is also a 50/50 grant, up to $15,000. It's helped to bring the building or the property up to code and offer a chance for them to do significant interior capital improvements. That includes electrical, plumbing, other city state codes, removal of the false ceiling, masonry port, repair, excuse me, asbestos and lead abeyments, coal relay improvements, fire suspension, and other interior improvements. The third one is the sign improvement grants, a 50/50, matching grant up to $2,500. This is to help seek the removal and replacement of the signs that currently are downtown to kind of give a more uniform look to it and improve the signage so people know the business. So, the examples of how we can help is replacing the neon signs, banners, letter on the windows, historic appropriate signage, and of course, on the signage on the awnings. Lastly is our Downtown Brownsville Rent Subsidy Program. This is to provide rent assistance up to 12 months to key businesses, activities like your retail, your dining, arts, entertainment that choose to relocate or expand their gross rental space to enhance economic growth and to assist in filling vacancies within our designated corridor. Object, we want to get like more restaurants, bistros, cafes, specialty shops, art studios to open downtown area. The 12-month rent subsidy would not exceed $7,500, which we would still yet to be determined because we want to form a committee. Businesses must sign a two-year lease and be open at least six days a week, and preference would be given if they're open past 5:00 p.m. Here's an example of what our subsidy would be. The first six months is at 50% or up to $800 a month. Second month, second, six months would be 30% or up to $500 a month. So, total investments roughly about $7,800 we go with this example. And we still need to do a survey to find out the current vacancies and what their rent is, so we can kind of get an average to make sure that we can really assist with the rent subsidy. Including with the rent subsidy, they need to work with a Small Business Development Center or the Women's Business Development Center or the UTRGV Entrepreneurship to develop a business plan. They need to provide financial information related to the startup and operation of it, attend trainings and workshops and opportunities that deal with marketing, HR, customer service, with marketing, H R, customer service, and merchandise management to help them succeed. So, how will this work? Application will be using our grant application portal on our BCIC website. Property or tenants will submit applications, including all design plans, construction, quotes, and bids. All applications will be reviewed and elevated on a monthly basis by the big incentive committee and presented approval by the BCIC board. The committee would be, consists of eleven members, two on the Main Street, two on the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board, two of our BCIC board members, a BCIC staff, and four city staff, which include the city, the Main Street Manager, the Historic Preservation Officer, Building Official, and the Fire Marshal. If approved, the applicant will go through the appropriate permit procedures and make their approved, improvements within one calendar year. After improvements are complete, a final walkthrough with the staff and BCIC, and then we will do the payment. So, the funding breakdown is for the exterior, interior, and signage, we're offering a hundred fifty thousand dollars for each year, and the rent subsidy, fifty thousand dollars. So, once it's used up, then we wait until the following fiscal year. They, our board has agreed that these are stackable, so an applicant can apply for more than one grant at one time. During the first quarter, we'll conduct informational sessions and be available for one-to-one meetings. The intent is to have applications and guidelines available within the first quarter of two thousand nineteen, and hopes to have our first application review in April or May. If funds do run out every fiscal year, then our board can evaluate and determine if more funds should be allocated from the BCIC's current fiscal budget. So, that is it on the big incentives committee. Guys, any questions?
I'd like to congratulate your past board for doing, and your staff, for doing such excellent work. It warms my heart to see BCIC grow to this point. Thank you very much, past board and staff.
Good work, good work. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move to accept it or to approve it, this big grant.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number seventeen. Consideration action in the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation Project Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2018 Capital Projects Grants for the Fall Cycle.
Okay, so, we are here now again for our grant application, our second cycle for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Just to actually educate is we allocate a percentage of our annual budget to capital projects that are aligned to our strategic priorities and visions. Examples include a downtown revitalization project, necessary to increase sales tax revenue and foster investor properties, opportunities, excuse me. Projects are designed to increase recreational tourism, inspire small business development, or support the active transportation plan. Projects that support cultural, sports, fitness, recreational, entertainment community, and that will contribute to the sustainability and growth of the Brownsville sales tax revenue. So, this past cycle, we had three applicants. We had the City of Brownsville for their Bike Barn Park restroom project, Brownsville Museum of Fine Art for their community building and economic development through the arts, and West Brownsville Little League for their improvements at the park, for a total of four hundred thousand dollars, which is within our, what we had put for our fiscal year cycle two project, which is the second one, my apologies. So, the first one is the Bike Barn restroom. It's, the problem is the volunteers and visitors of the Bike Barn in Washington Park and the surrounding areas do not have access to an onsite restroom facility. So, the request is to fund, to, towards the purchase and installation of a prefabricated restroom facility that will be open to the public and be located on the Bike Barn property to address the absence of the public restroom for us, for visitors and volunteers at the Bike Barn in the Washington Park area. And that's for a hundred thousand dollars. I'm sorry, that's for fifty thousand dollars. Total project's a hundred thousand dollars. The next is the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art, the Community Building and Economic Development Through the Arts Project. They're asking for fifty thousand. Total project cost is sixty thousand. Their current problem is their A C unit are not fully functional and cannot adequately preserve the art pieces in their collection and traveling exhibits. The front entrance facade is falling apart and represents a high external risk to visitors and staff. The gallery rooms do not offer adequate lighting or proper exhibit art materials and have mal illumination that has no level to control. Additionally, these rooms do not have significant sound systems to properly do the audiovisual materials. And then their workshop and classrooms are, which are highly used, are exposed to high heat coming from the west-facing windows and provoke the A C units to work harder to keep a comfortable temperature. So, their request is to replace the non-working A C units, repair the front entrance facade, install modern lighting and sound system that will allow to properly display and maximize the quality of the exhibits, and install roll-up lines to cover the windows that prevent access and light and the heat in the museum. And lastly is the West Brownsville Little League Park Improvements Project. Their funding request is three hundred thousand. Total project is over six hundred sixty-seven thousand. Their problem is they currently register over three hundred seventy-five players but have to turn away about a hundred and fifty potential participants due to reaching the park's capacity limit for players. So, their request is to construct an eighty-eight accessible Miracle tee ball field, turfing existing fields, and installation of special needs playground equipment. The fiscal and aesthetics improvements will allow the organization to increase the number of participants in baseball, softball, tee ball, and accommodate special need players and better accommodate visitors from Brownsville's surrounding Texas communities that come to watch their games. So, what's in highlighting in blue is where their proposed Miracle Field will be, as well as the playground will be adjacent to that. And that's it for the three projects.
That was the park that had been brought to the commission before by Mark Lucio, right? And Commissioner.
Yes.
The London myself.
Yeah, City of Brownsville is helping with certain areas of improvements, but they just want, they want to go further on. So, they want to do the tee ball, the Miracle Field.
Excellent.
Which will, if, if it is done, then it will actually be the first in the valley for this kind of park.
That would be great.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number eighteen. Consideration action directing city staff to create a Brownsville Code of Ethics.
I would move that we direct city staff to create a Code of Ethics.
I would ask for clarification, mayor. Is it still going to come back to the commission or?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number nineteen. Consideration and action directing city staff to create a whistleblower policy.
I would make the same motion for the whistleblower policy.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number twenty. Consideration action to award a term contract for economic analysis forecasting and research services as budgeted.
Good evening, honorable mayor commissioners. This evening before, you have an action item regarding a term contract for economic analysis forecasting and research services. What is this? Well, as you know, we've been talking about tax increment funding, and this is actually a company, after going out, it, we've, it's a one-year contract with two-year renewable options. A committee of four individuals was formed, and it was a responsive and responsible bid. The winning company was TXP Inc., and staff recommends approval, one-year base period with two additional one-year terms. And we will use this as needed as jurisdictions and other tax incrementation opportunities come to the city.
Motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Action item number twenty-one. Consideration action on resolution number twenty-eighteen dash zero fifty-seven in support of efforts to enter into discussions to form a regional metropolitan planning organization in the Rio Grande Valley.
Yes, I know that there's been discussions recently regarding the realignment of the NPOs, the three NPOs in the valley. I know there's been a lot of headway made, so we just thought it would be great to have a resolution coming from the city commission supporting the talks, the efforts to enter into discussions to form a regional NPO in the Rio Grande Valley.
Motion to approve?
I have a question. Is it too late?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
My question was just on the word form. If you read it one way, it tells me that you have already decided to form the regional. On the other hand, if you read it a different way, it's to explore the possibility of forming a regional. So, I'd like clarification.
Just to explore, just to enter into discussions. Nothing has been determined yet.
Motion to approve?
Yeah. Okay, and do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Merry Christmas and Merry Jordan for the year.
Second.
I'll grant both of them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.